Pledge of allegiance.
Levon.
Levon just walked in. Okay, we'll give her a second. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's call a meeting over. Start with the roll call.
Hey, Brennaman.
Yep.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Menin is absent with notice.
Do I have a motion for approval or any additions to the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, regular meeting on 3/2 and the special meeting on 3/10? Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March 2nd.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the special meeting minutes from 3/10?
Motion to approve this meeting from 3/10 of the special meeting?
Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote. O'Hara. Keel. Levon.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Mark. And I'm a yes. Motion to approve bill submitted for payment?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Monahan.
Yeah.
Brennaman.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, any public input from non-agenda- on non-agendites? Hearing none, we'll keep rolling. Visitors, we got Callie Tushen from downtown Hartford.
Hello and good evening, everyone. So Ricky is not able to be here, and so I'm gonna go ahead and give you guys a little bit of an update of the busy month that we've had for downtown Hartford Inc. Couple things happened this last month that were pretty significant. One of them, well, both of them were brought to us by Jesse Honker, our good buddy in the now no longer the Kita Makita.
Sue Metro Growth Alliance.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so. He introduced us to Jared Hybertson in Centerville, and that was a really great opportunity for us as downtown Hartford to see in action how an organization, he's their economic development director, but he holds a lot of different roles, and he basically has their downtown bumping and grinding. And they have ownership of about six or eight buildings that they lease out to businesses. And so that was really good for our group to see ways to do economic development in the downtown and take your participant, an active participant in that. And so then later that week, we had the wonderful opportunity to speak with Steve Watson of ISG. And he came in and talked to us about ISG's master planning opportunity, that he showed us what they've done in Dusmet, what they've done in Fort Pierce, Madison, and then some of what they've done out in Hosprins. And just really laid out a really nice proposal for how we can really take some shape to our downtown space. And so we had a lot of different discussions and meetings within our group, and we decided that, you know what, if there was ever a time to create a master plan for downtown Hartford now, is it? And so we decided that we wanted to move forward with figuring out how to make this happen. And so we went to work, and we have basically come up with most of, not all of, the funding through multiple avenues for grants and whatnot, so we can cover the $14,500 bill for this master plan. And we want to have the city at the table, HADF, Vision 20, 25. We would like to reach out to other partners with Parks and Rec, the Bike Trail Committee. We want this to be an all-encompass collaborative effort where we can all work together and come up with what is our roadmap, what is our foundation that we all agree upon, so that when opportunities come up or businesses want to move in, and we know what our downtown space is going to look like and how, what fits and what doesn't fit. So basically, one of our asks for you guys is to consider if there's anybody that wants to maybe sit on our task force, what that's gonna look like when we start working with ISG. It'll be happening in the beginning of April is kind of the timeframe. They believe, they told us it'd probably be August or at the very latest September that the master planning process would be finalized, and we would have that, the final copy. So it's gonna be a matter of, we're gonna be walking down, looking at the downtown space all together, talking about it, and then there's gonna be multiple community meetings and involvement for not just our group, our task force group, but community-wide for people to have input of what they think the downtown space should be. So if anybody with the city wants to participate with that, then please let Ricky himself know so that we can add you to our list. Does anybody have questions about this? I know that there's been a lot of other things going on too, and so we definitely thought that this was a pretty awesome opportunity, so we wanna make sure that we're working together with everybody.
When's your next meeting for that group?
Actually, it's this Thursday, the 18th.
So did I understand you correctly, Callie, you have the money?
So basically, we have, so I'll just tell you who we've worked soliciting funding from, Golden West, Sioux Valley, Mid-American, and then we're gonna reach out to Hartford area and Sioux Falls area community foundations. And we've got commitment from all of them that they're going to contribute, and so it's just a matter of how much. And then we've got some money in our budget if we need to cover any differences. Potentially, then Vision 25 might pitch into if we're short somewhere, but I'm pretty confident that we've got it all covered.
Good work.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions?
I don't believe so. Is there something that we need, I don't know if we need a motion on there? They pretty well got her.
We were just wanting to make sure you guys kinda knew what was going on.
I would say they don't care. That'd be mean if I said that.
It's not in that.
Not in that, thank you for correcting me, yeah, that would not be in that. We've had, as you know, maybe, Callie, I don't know if you've been here, we're talking about establishing a park board or quality of life board. I wonder if this is something that may ducktail into what that group is doing as maybe as they can give you some advisory help.
Has that committee been formed yet?
It has not. We're gonna, I think we're gonna talk about it again tonight, so that's, that's been something we've been discussing for some time, so.
I would just say that that's kind of the thing that brought all this about, because we had all these groups who are doing great things and wanting to do stuff, and yet there's funding and there's support and there's, you know, and it came up, there needs to be a plan. Hartford's never had a plan, and had a plan, especially with the park situation, because even I hear you've got the veterans park downtown, you've got the potential for maybe another small area now, so.
Yep.
Yeah, from our perspective, that's what it's all about, is just to get everybody on the same page and get everybody's input, because no small group's gonna have all the answers.
I'd say far be it from us to throw any water on this deal, because it's kind of exciting to see a group kind of taking the bull and running with this deal. It's pretty hard for us to say we should slow you guys down. I'd rather see it, you know, go, and especially nice when you're not asking for money.
That was the intent.
We always like that. All right, and that meeting is where, Thursday at the brewery or?
Our meeting is at the church.
At the church?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's nine in the morning. Nine in the morning? I would say with the cameras on what I'm thinking, but yeah, so. All right.
Which church?
Murphy Church.
Murphy Church, just on the corner.
All right. Thanks, Callie.
You're welcome.
We have an application in our packet for a special event, Miles for Murphy 5K and scavenger hunt. I don't know that we have anybody.
Do you see anybody here from this?
Yeah, it's from the National Honor Society.
Yeah, I think this is probably the fourth year, maybe?
Or the fifth.
Yeah, maybe. The National Honor Society of Central has been putting this on, using it as a fundraiser, 5K run, they're adding a scavenger hunt in this year that they're gonna do just within the park, but basically, they want to have it on March 27th. In the past, they have asked for, you know, basically, all the city does is let them use our paint spray to mark the streets or whatnot, but they totally run the organization, or the event, I guess, the one, so. They turned their application to Karen and paid the fee, so.
Oh, they did pay the fee?
Yep.
All right, we got any motions?
Motion to approve application for special event permit with Central National Honor Society, Miles for Murphy and scavenger hunt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I carry, we got second reading of ordinance 705 zoning amendment for onsite signage. Nothing changed, Theresa?
No, not since first reading. We talked about this a couple weeks ago at our last meeting. It's just basically changing the square footage you allow for industrial, light and heavy industrial. Basically, just increasing it to meet what we allow in commercial, which are very small amounts.
All right, any motions?
Motion to approve ordinance 705.
Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, we'll move down to reports, fire department reports, Chief Horn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for February, it's like 23 total calls, 13 in the city. Training. March EMS training got postponed, I believe that was due to weather and some other events with the instructor, so that'll be held next month. It was supposed to be role of research, evidence-based guidelines, ROSC, and they held that. Fire training is gonna be search and rescue training, and that is gonna be held at the house that, I believe Theresa, you gave us a line on that, it's gonna be demolition on Vandemark.
On Vandemark, yeah.
So gentlemen of that house, you greatly offered it up for us to use for training, so we're going to be smoking it up and letting firefighters get some search and rescue training and all that good stuff. If time permits before it gets demoed, we may do a secondary training in the next month too, so. We'll not be burning the house down for town, so we gotta put you on that.
Boy, with all the snow, it'd be a good time right now.
Yeah, it's all the cold snow on next door.
Oh, we don't want that to happen.
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Good. All right, we'll move on to the Chamber and Economic Development Director, Amy.
Thank you. So my report is in the packet. I am continuing to meet with many individuals. I was recently asked to help mentor the new chamber manager, Donovan Vermillion, from their present CEO, working to still do some Facebook posts and things for the chamber site, still working on different things for the Development Foundation on their website as well, having meetings there too. Was a featured speaker, I guess, last Tuesday at Satoma Club. Jake Droge invited me, he assisted me on some of the questions, since I was so new to the role, but had some great exchange of discussion with Hartford and land development and things of that nature at that meeting. So that's kind of my report, not sure if you have any questions on that. If not, I'll move into my request. So the Chamber of Commerce would like to release the 2021 budgeted funds, not just for jamboree days, we'd like the full operating chamber budget, so if you need the breakdown, I can tell you, but otherwise, it's about $32,000. And then the Hartford Development Foundation would also like to request the release of funds for their 2021 budget for operating expenses, which is about $55,590.
And the package will send out on Friday, they were just taking the carnival funds for jamboree, but they decided they're asking for the full amount.
Yes.
The 32 includes 15 for the carnival?
Correct.
So I recall, we've had a little discussion, I would say, Travis and I had a little discussion about this this morning. So last year, we gave 15,000 for the carnival. So I know you didn't spend that, you spent some, so where's that money?
It's still currently sitting in the budget per se, because the carnivals have gone up, so we're looking to hopefully use.
By double?
Not necessarily. Now, here's the other thing too, we're not sure if we're gonna get a carnival, we're working very hard to find one, but otherwise, we do have other games and things that we'd like to do in place of that, so that money would possibly be used there.
So what if we said we were gonna give you the money less than 15? Is that gonna cause a bunch of heartburn amongst the Chamber and Jamboree Committee?
Nope, we'll just go with it with what we're at, and if we have to come back and ask for something because we're behind, we'll be happy to do that.
I threw the carnival.
I did?
Well, yeah, by doubling the request.
Oh, sorry.
Was it just for the 15,000 for the carnival too?
Sorry, it was for the last minute, sorry.
Don't say we don't make any less than it, but you chose.
I think that's what we're saying.
I'm gonna go with you.
I'm new, come on.
Well, I don't know.
You're already mentoring people.
I'm new, this is the first meeting I'm running this year, I'm new too.
Whatever you guys do is appropriate, we will go with.
I know that's a double request, but I almost wonder if that other 12 is still sitting there in their, in their budget, if we'd be, it's more fiscally prudent for right now to say, we'll give them their 17, or give them the 17 out of that amount for their general operating, but hold that 15 until we know if we're gonna procure a carnival, Ben? Yeah, it's my understanding is that you can secure a carnival without having to pay the whole amount down, so if you could secure the carnival, that you could come back and ask for the funding for that. Let's check the scan here, it looks, it don't seem like you don't have any money, but it looks like there's quite a bit of money that flows through the chamber.
And the budget amount I see on your books there, Amy, is 20,000 for the carnival, so is that just kind of a, that's more than what you've usually paid, is that what you're?
That, we're considering that as part of the increase, because they're in high demand right now, which I think is weird because of the pandemic, so there's like three of us working through different avenues to secure a carnival.
Well, we'll do these separately, may, any motions on either of those two requests? Or any further comments?
Motion to approve HACC request to release 2021 budgeted funds for their operating expenses. Do we need to specify the dollar?
I'm gonna say, so we say operating expense, is that the full amount or just the 12,000 that operate?
Just the 12,000.
Okay.
Not including the jamboree days.
What about the 5,000 for Halloween?
Not including that. So you're saying 12 out of the 30? Yes.
There's a second? No second? So that dies for now? Any other motions?
I think most should release all the 2021 funds.
For? Both?
Yeah, in its entirety, the Hartford Chamber, for Halloween, for the carnival, and the operating.
We got a second on that. Second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Or if there's no carnival?
Probably shouldn't ask, thanks, get out.
The chamber, in my opinion, the chamber puts the jamboree in a bit of a bad light, but this acts.
If there's no carnival?
Right.
So refresh my memory, last year, we went down this road?
Yep.
And what did they do with the funds?
15, we gave them 15, they put 12, it's still in their, set in their budget, or they say, and where?
Correct. They utilized some of the other funds for other events like business in the park and so forth, but with the pandemic, obviously, we weren't able to spend all of them, or push them towards other events, because they were canceled as well.
Well, supposedly, last year, they were split, they were gonna use some, because that's right when we were between directors.
Yeah, Gabby came in, that's when we didn't have Gabe, and so they were employing the gal down at Grow Cod Inc. to do some of their bookwork and marketing, yeah, so I think they bought 3,000, so they spent towards that.
And from my understanding, this is still the same, if it doesn't get spent on jamboree day carnival or a jamboree day event alternative, it's still not getting paid for else.
So like I said, if there is no carnival, we do have other ideas for other themes that will be needing to be purchased for the day.
But having some.
Or if somebody, they could come to you and present what they're looking at, and then request them all. I mean, similar to what the Jamboree Committee did last year, I mean, we asked for 25, but we only asked for five at the end of the day.
So, what's that? You asked for 25?
We got approved last year for 2020 for 25.
And?
Well, we only came out and asked for five because of the change. We never asked for any of the funds. We haven't asked for even this year's funding yet, because it isn't, I mean, it isn't until June. And we're already booking our stuff, so. We'll come when it gets closer, when we know where we're at.
So the motion was?
To release the entire 32,000.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman? Yeah. I'm gonna be a no. Randall?
Abstain.
Travis?
No.
Mark?
Yeah.
So how do we end up?
We had three votes, so.
So it fails? That motion fails. So let's, let's for now move on to the HADF request for their funds, 55,590. Any motions on that?
Motion to approve.
We got a second on that.
Second.
We got a motion as second on the HADF request for funding for 55,590. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Abstain.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Monahan?
No.
And I'm a yes. How do we turn out on that one? That one didn't pass?
That one passed, we have Travis, Levon, Oregon, Mark, correct?
Okay.
So it was the same, oh, so it was just Mark?
Travis abstained. So we got O'Hara, Randall, me, and? We still got four on that, so we're good on that one? Anything else on the chamber one before we move on?
I need to separate the two. I need to distinguish between the chamber and the HADF when it comes to dollars, regardless of whether it's a carnival or not.
Well, they each have their own individual budget, correct?
HADF is all operating expense, where they've kind of, the chamber only needs 12,000 to really operate, but then to put on these two separate events, the carnival and the Halloween event, they need extra funds. It never used to be separated years ago, but they never used to have the carnival or the Halloween event years ago. They added them and come and ask for more funding from the council, so that's how, that's why they kind of know like the difference.
Is it fair to say that they're both under Amy's, under this, you know, the Chamber Economic Development Director's report, because she's the liaison?
She's the director.
She's the director of both of those, so. As a board member with the HADF, I wasn't, I was surprised to see that on the report as a request, to be honest. But it's, you know, first quarter 2021, so get asked for it sometime.
Anything else? If not, we're gonna move on. Hearing none, City Engineer report.
Evening, folks. So we hit the ground running today, we were gonna, had a little bit of a delay, we actually had a little bit of snow, so we had to, one of our members of the meeting a little bit busy, so, but met with Craig and Theresa today from 3 to 5, you know, reviewed, reviewed notes and really wanted to make sure that we got on the same page overall. So data sharing back and forth actually set up a shared file site so that we can transfer that information fairly easily, and then just went through a lot of the meeting attendance, cadence, roles and responsibilities of various things, went through service providers, various for the city, and then walked through, on the development side, concept review plans and plots, and exactly what we want to do for each one of those, what's kind of expected coming back from us, the GIS grants and current state of projects as well. So that's kind of in general what we went over. One thing that kind of came up in discussion was on the, on the developments, on the testing requirements there, and what you want for us to review on those. I know Craig and I were kind of discussing that, and exactly what level of oversight that you want in the developments. I think we're really willing to do what you guys are comfortable with, to make sure that, you know, that infrastructure gets installed, you're gonna be taking that infrastructure off, right, as a city asset. So if you're going to, you want to make sure that's installed in plan and specification, right? So really, I think that there is some level of intermittent review that can take place. So really, I think that there is some level of intermittent review that can take place, you know, when there's hot ticket items. It's really what we want to do, that when we see things going in the ground before it gets covered, and like when there's paving operations and things like that, so. That's kind of what we were thinking. Craig, anything else?
No, you know, maybe do some spot inspection, stuff like that, through all, through all those projects, but I don't want to make it wrong to do it, some of the underground stuff and sewer. I mean, I get stopped in there off and on, you know, check things over, but I'm not there constantly. Same way with patching, or not patching, but paving. It's nice that these guys here that check the dents, stuff like that, make sure that it's getting paved properly, so. So that's kind of how we left it.
Yeah, wanna make sure you guys agree. Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense, that's. Just because we're making a change doesn't mean we're gonna let, start letting stuff slip through the cracks, we're gonna keep an eye on what happens going forward.
It feels like sometimes the developments get their most productive days on Saturdays.
Yeah.
I don't know how we monitor that.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I mean, there's definitely some things that can be put into specifications moving forward in regards to that, that there has to be some type of prior approval, because a lot of times, I mean, it's not hard for us to be able to allocate something on Saturday too, so. But if, and if, that's, that's construction in the Midwest, right? I mean, when there's good days to be had, there's good days to be had, so we understand that as well, and our folks. I got Michael Rindball, one of our folks here, that's in our Sioux Falls office. But I have 18 folks there that understand that when it's, when the going's good, they're good to be had, so. We gotta make sure that they're gonna keep going forward too, so we're flexible, we can be flexible.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because literally, they're pressing hundreds and hundreds of feet. Underground going.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, completely agree. So I think a lot of that is just the communication back and forth with the developers and their contractors, to ensure that we know exactly what's going on on site. Great, one other thing, we have a meeting tomorrow on the feasibility report. We've already been compiling, so, so quite a bit of the data sharing on the general services, we've actually not received, but really just kicked off on Monday. But we've already been reviewing a lot of your specifications, a lot of your ordinances, a lot of your requirements. So that's already been underway. And then the meeting on your feasibility report, currently compiling all documents from the current NPDS, list of the communities to contact that we're actually developing as well, listed the targeted development areas, list of potential locations to visit for technology evaluation, we're putting that together right now, of areas, locations that we want to go and actually review, to help, you know, foster that discussion of, hey, we really like V O N M on this, or there's some components here, and get really good critical feedback from, from operators that say, these are the things that we actually don't like about this technology, so when we go into that evaluation, we can really weigh that. And there's, there'll be a series of meetings upcoming to be scheduled and held. I did have one question to this group, does the city wish to have a representative or series of included in those discussions? There'll be, it'll be a lot of meetings, so it's, it's all always open, and I'm happy to have anybody there, but I know that there's definitely something that there's gonna be a lot of meetings coming up, and does it make sense to have some type of rep? Focus on attending more of those than most, so. I think at a minimum, I would, I would definitely recommend, when we're having those communications with communities, that we put something together from the city that says, hey, these are, this is what they're gonna be discussing with you, this is why they want to meet, and this is what they're evaluating. Just prior to those conversations taking place, I think makes a lot of sense, so. We'll put that together and provide that back for your guys' review.
Yeah, with meeting times and stuff like that too, for, in case we're available, or company members available.
Yep.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, when we, when we can, it'd really be great if one of us, at least one of us could go on some of that.
Well, we'll most certainly make Teresa's staff aware of all those times, and they can share that information with you. But if there's somebody that wants to meet or ignore those, have them do that as well, so. And then upcoming with that, we're in some discussions with the state D N R, already started those discussions, especially in regards to T M D L and Scott Creek, and that wasteful allocation, this is, I mean, this, I know we already covered that, but it's very opportunistic right now, with them going through that cycle right now, to do that evaluation, that we're really stressing that communication, and having that conversation with them. They have more flexibility now as they go through that process, most certainly than when they get on the back end of that process of that wasteful allocation, it's really difficult. So, really kind of perfect timing, but at some point in time, we'll wanna, wanna go to peer and meet with them face to face and just understand exactly where they sit in that process, and where you guys can find that process too, so.
Questions?
I'm worried about the day end, so. But I think Teresa already and Craig have done absolutely great, already shared information back and forth, so appreciate that.
That's good. You don't make any questions? That's awesome. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Craig.
Just a couple changes, I guess we're ahead. Streetlights, still work on that with Trevor, with Sioux Valley, trying to get that finalized and done. We were supposed to meet yesterday and it didn't work out, so sometime this week we'll get together and figure out what we're gonna. Probably just look at this COVID one sensor, it could be a huge difference, things going on downtown, so. We'll get them, get that put out and get that down to schedule, so we get that down to spring here. And generator for Mickelson Road lift station, that, through that grant. Sounds like we can go ahead and source well now, so we are actually going ahead with that, I talked to a gentleman with the generator that I like to go with, and he's gonna get, get some stuff finished up now, and then we're gonna try to get this sorted, so. And the only thing on the report to talk about, I guess, is the slurry seal. If you notice, bids came in below budget number. Aztec is actually, first time that we, well, first time Sioux Falls even had them, so it's gonna be a new company, they're on Minnesota. Sioux Falls, I don't know. I didn't get a chance to talk to Nick today, see if they actually accepted it, but that was his recommendation to his council, so I'm sure they won't be accepting it. I guess I'd like to see a motion to recommend Aztec contingent upon Sioux Falls, and then be able to use the budget money that we've got available for it, so. There'll be some spots here and there that, like, always just touch up some lawyers and improve later on, something like that, so.
That's why they're seeming to make that slurry seal peel off quicker. Seems a lot, see a lot of P rock in the snow.
I noticed that too on some of the, yeah, it's, something's probably going on a six here, so it's gonna sort of peel and some it up. Not as bad as the chip seal.
Correct, true. Not as bad as a gravel. Not as bad as my parking. I motion approve, Aztec, they contend on Sioux Falls approval, not to exceed the budget number of 190,750.
Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And that's all we got, most everybody has.
Any questions for Craig?
Lighting question.
Okay.
Have you been approached about some additional lighting on Van De Mar?
Yes, and that's one of the things that me and Trevor are gonna look at also with that, so. He was gonna do, go back and see, because they changed their standards, where it used to be, we'd put them up just at intersections, and then Sioux Valley kind of changed on their standards, and put a space, space hill instead, so we are gonna look at that too, so.
300 feet or something like that, maybe?
Yeah, the only thing that they, when I was approached, the party that approached me said that the homeowners there don't, if they get a light, they don't want to have wooden poles. They'd like to see an aluminum one, so they said that. It sounded like they'd be willing to pay the fees that we charged to have them put in, but that's something that I told them, I said, well, before we change our standard, then I would come back to you guys, once I get approval from Sioux Valley, recommend that there should be a light there. So we're still a little ways out of that, so.
Well, the city's policy is just to put up wooden holes on any city streets. Within developments, if a developer wants to upgrade to the steel poles, we charge them $1,000 per pole. And so basically, that upgrades $1,000, so just to raise that cost. I made a motion on that about three years ago.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
I think they used the term fiscally conservative with that, the city was trying to be fiscally conservative.
Right.
Or cheap. One of those two phrases.
How do you, party end up with?
Those have been there for a long time.
So they had those ornamental lights.
Replacement.
Yes, it was a replacement. They were trying to replace kind of light for light, they call those ornamental lights, what you have up front.
That's fiscally conservative.
And ornamental lights and steel poles cost us more per month to have than the wooden poles.
And Sioux Valley says there's a ton of maintenance expenses.
Oh.
They spent, they spent a lot of time up there, put those ornamental ones.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
So yeah, that'll be something, probably next meeting here too, bring it up, see what you guys feel about that, so.
All right. All right, thanks, Craig. Karen, Finance Officer, report.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add unless anyone has questions for me. I do have one action item, the auditors have completed our annual report for 2020. Draft is included in your package. I've looked it over, and she says it's gonna look it over, and looks in line, so I just need approval on that, and send a copy on to the state. Get that all done.
It's nice to see that difference in funds from last year to this year. Wowie. That's a nice number.
Yeah, that was before COVID in '20, I think it was trending up in '20 as well, wasn't it? The 30, the 3.3 was, I think, above 2019 as well, that's all reasonable.
Was that my hair in the last year?
Yeah. All right. Any motions on the annual report?
Motion to approve the 2020 annual report.
Brandon? Sager? Got a motion and second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Anything else, Karen?
Nope, that was it.
Thank you. Teresa?
Well, basically, the only thing really, I want to point out in my report is, we're taking applications for the summer health. Amy Seabert has applied again for pool manager, we're hiring her, and then Laura Johnson again as the park rec director, so we got both those on board. And then we continue to take applications for Assistant Public Works, Light Arts and whatnot, we've got a few coming in. We still haven't received one for our dump monitor, which is, our dump's supposed to open, you know, the first week in April. We have a gentleman that says he's interested if nobody else comes in, so we'll see what we get by the end of this month, and we'll give you an update on that for our next meeting. And then, basically, the only thing that we haven't touched on is that, after, as we were doing the feasibility study, after the council approved that, I knew there was a small grant out there to evolve that, so our contact is C C O D right away, and there is a $10,000 small community grant, which you can apply for at any time, so we have that application already done and sent in, and we should hear it within a week, and that's $10,000, so that will help with our $50,000 target, so. That's all I have for now, and the only thing I have for action item on mine is that a motion was made a couple weeks to extend an offer out for the part-time office help. I just would like a motion to actually put the name in the minutes as a record that we're hiring Jennifer Stanglin for 1550 as a part-time office assistant.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and second to approve the hire of Jennifer Stanglin at 1550? Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Yep, and I'm a yes. Anything else, Teresa?
No.
I do, for her.
Oh.
This is a question that kind of circles back to the Chamber request. When we approve a budget that's submitted, and I don't know if this is fact or not, what was submitted last year is the same as the request that was just me. You know?
Yes, yes, so what they submitted last year, 32,000, is what, that's the question they should have.
So when we approve the budget, why do we have to approve releasing funds?
Because our policy is that, okay, if something is in budget, anything over $5,000 means council approval to release it. Same way as when we buy a pickup, we come back to you to release the funds. Just because it's sitting in budget doesn't automatically mean we're gonna release it, no.
Once it's in the budget, it's just earmarked.
It's earmarked, yeah.
Or X Y.
Yeah. And it's always been our policy that any allocations to outside entity, because once we release, have an outside entity, we have no say-so over those funds at all, that we've always asked them to request. Everything with the fire department and.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to old business, discussion of Park Advisory Board. What's that? Oh, committee, excuse me.
Yes.
Park Advisory.
We nixed the board, or not to the park board, so.
Sorry, words mean things.
So I think the discussion was that talk about, instead of looking at a board, that we would look at an advisory committee.
Right.
And so basically, in your package, it is just a draft of bylaws for that committee. I guess discussion should be had, it, how it's drafted, it is what is presented, same way in the ordinance, you know, a seven-member board, five voting members, you know, two non-voting, basically, it sets their terms, when they'll meet, you know, the hub officers and whatnot. I, I guess, I look for this, if you want to move forward with something like this, is this the setup you want? I mean, we can have more members, we can have less members, we could change the terms, I mean, this is totally up to council discretion.
One of the points was compensation, let's see, anybody think about that?
And as a committee, you can compensate them, so. That was the difference between board and committee.
Right.
So a board can be compensated?
Right, that's one of the things, tell them if you set up a board through ordinance, it says in state law that you can't pay them. But now, a committee, advisory committee, if you just set it up the city.
Interesting.
Yeah.
You could pay for anything else you do for the city, but not something like that.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's state law, so that's kind of the law.
And the other deal, when Tom was here, he said on the, on a board set up by an ordinance, it gives them far greater latitude than this does.
Right.
A committee is what it says, they're an advisory committee.
Right.
A board, we're gonna turn over a piece of control of the budget to that group.
Yeah, so whatever you put a dollar amount in the park for budgeting supplies or maybe, they'll kind of control how that will be spent.
Unless it's $5,000.
Unless.
5,000 or more, then they'd have to go back.
5,000 or more, yeah.
So. I'm the odd man out here, but I'm just going to go on the record, I'd rather seek a board, personally. I got multiple reasons, but I think we're gonna set up this committee to make decisions and then come to us, we're just adding extra work.
Letter of breath.
You're out.
Christine?
Yeah.
In a way, and I also think, like, why would I serve on city council in the trust to make decisions or recommendations, but not have a authority to do it? So if I was on the Park and Rec Committee as an example, committee thinks we should do this, we've done the research, we've done the homework, and this is our recommendation. And then us as a council decide, eh, no, you know what, I really don't like that idea. And I'm gonna sit in the committee and go, why'd you make that recommendation, why'd you put the energy into it? And then I don't really be on that committee anymore. And to be very honest, that feeling kind of relates back to the Chamber request. Would they have been better off just saying they want 32,000, and that pole is what it was for? And then us to decide, oh, it should or shouldn't be spent? I don't know. I gave my opinion, I'm done.
I'm just the odd man out, I know we just, it seemed like we kind of got, uh, hand Tom with it. Put the fear in us a bit.
Yeah.
About how much power that group has, but champ point and to your point, put the $5,000 pending on it, so it's people without board council approval. Wasn't really considered at that time, wasn't presented to us at that time, and I agree with you, we have advisory committees, we have the park and rec, or the light trail committee, we have the sports track committee, we have committees and they're in the same bull tail for getting power, so. Well, we've just kind of nixed the board, I think, I'm with you, I think. We just, I like the board idea.
I think Tom's concern was just safety for just having some say in what they decide, not knowing what this board would consist of and who it would consist of, since this is kind of a first go around. I think his concerns were more protective, that's the right word. Just not that at some point in time we can't decide, hey, we can make this a board. But I think his idea was, this is fairly a new thing, let's kind of keep a little bit of hands-on at first, and just go from there. So, I hear what you're saying too, Mark, I mean, empower people.
Sure, so you provided us with a list of other communities that have a board. Can we get the nuts and bolts of all those boards or? Shut up.
Sure, yeah, well, I've found out the ones that just have boards and, you know, and get a few there.
She had that summary, and that, and then I kind of go back to that is, I seen Tom's concern, but yet there were some rather large communities on there that had boards.
Right.
And it must work for them.
Right.
And I haven't done any research to know if it works for them or not.
Right.
I'm just going off of gut instinct in that aspect.
Or how long those boards have been.
Yeah.
Doing that job.
Right.
Which is experience can speak volumes too.
Can you reach out to them too, feel them Teresa and just? It'd be interesting if we have somebody saying, eh.
You have the summary. Yeah, it was a number of members paid or not paid.
Yeah.
Things like that, but maybe how long they've existed, what their statutes or their filings or how it's constructed, so.
And you know all the city administrators, they'll tell you if it's working or not working, that's really what we want to find out.
So, yeah, I can do that.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Let's leave it on for another.
Point out that window control is through budget, you only give them so much money, I mean, and many larger requests could still come through you, so that's a concern.
And Craig needs a few more people telling him what's going on, I really like that. I like that aspect.
Jeremy made it look like I was going to be a board member, so.
Yeah.
No, I get the moral of it.
Can you do that?
Trying to go back to what I said earlier about, we budget and trust committees where people produce stuff, but yet we're still regulating what they're doing, and I don't know if it's right or wrong, but it's an example I always use. In my industry, a fire department might approve to buy something for one dollar. And then when they get the bill, they have to approve the bill for one dollar. It seems redundant to me in that aspect, and I see that in some of the stuff we do here. And I think the difference between a board and committee is voting on that dollar twice. To buy it and to approve it, so we're gonna have the committee come to us and say, this is what we think, now what do you guys think? Well, why don't we do that ourselves? Do the research. So.
Be my opinion that we're not really spending our money, we're spending our constituents' money, that gives them an opportunity to stand here, complain, maybe have budgetary time, but perhaps the one dollar is actually going to be spent, eliminate that piece of it. Starts to feel like we're doing things without enough public oversight perhaps.
And a, and a board would be approved by us, but second, kind of secondarily responsible to the voters. We're ultimately responsible to the voters in our board. We may approve these guys and vote for them, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that are ultimately responsible for this deal. That's the way I look at it, I agree with what you're saying, that there's some redundancy, but that's, you can't take away the ability for the constituents or the voters, they got to, ultimately, they want one person basically, or six or seven of us to.
The chamber request felt like a rainy day fund, whereas another example would be the fire department. They have, they're consistently over asked for funds because they're, they're allocating funds for that new ladder truck or whatever that case might be. If the chamber said, we're, we're asking for this whole amount because we're going to, even if we don't spend it, we're going to put it over here for this other thing, or or something like that, would have, I guess the presentation would have, if it would have been better, might have been more receptive.
I'm not going to argue that, but we don't tell the fire department what they can or can't buy out of that money either. Like if they submit $20,000 for equipment, they have to buy equipment for that. We're not going to tell them, you can't buy that hose, or you can't buy that air pad. We're saying, here's your $20,000, go spend it. Right?
Yeah, once you release the funds.
So, we're getting a little on.
Alright, yeah, that's, yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
But this is something that, it all kind of bundles together for me.
Sure.
And that's where I'm at, that's why I believe in the board concept, whether we approve chamber funds or, or board funds. Now I've learned that we have a buffer in there too. Where they can't go hog wild and, and ask for $100,000 concessions to end and then put it up, sign instead, you know?
How's a board held accountable to the taxpayer?
Through the department?
Yeah.
I think it's going to be held accountable, you guys are going to be held accountable because they report to you.
Right.
So I'm.
So, so the public's recourse would be to lean on the council to in turn lean on the board?
Correct.
It's, it's a board under the city and ultimately, yeah, you guys are the city, for sure the city.
They probably, maybe it's just like.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we have the public.
Yeah, right.
And it gives the constituents a chance to show up if they see something that's on the meeting, that they are either for or want to reinforce or against, to turn this point, they can show up and speak. So then it's not on us, we can say, well, it was on the agenda.
What was the original intent of either the board or the committee? Because it seems so long ago, I can't remember how it got brought up, I can't even remember who brought it up.
Jeremy, I think Jeremy brought it up originally.
Right.
And I think his intention, I don't want to speak for him, but I got that his intention is he wanted to form, whether it be a board or committee, but this group that would kind of work as an advisory, I thought his original intent was, that would basically filter ideals from the sports, from rec complex, from the bike trail, from these various other, you know, whether it even just be from a citizen, say, hey, we'd like to see this happen. They would kind of vet out that ideal, see pros and cons, if it worked or not, and then they would bring that to the council to, here. We've already vetted this idea a lot, here's what we recommend, like to see happen, is what I think the original.
So if we, if we take it one step further, let's hypothetically, let's just hypothetically say that we do create a board with authority by state law. I would assume they're going to have to submit a budget. So then that budget's going to be X amount of money, and that budget is going to have line items, this A, B, C, and D. And I assume they're going to have to come to a council meeting if it's over $5,000 and request for funds to be released. And then spend the funds.
And in their case, Mark, they're going to be, have to be working very closely with Craig, because Craig's going to be filling in the numbers for them, I would assume, on a lot of that stuff.
See, that, that's another thing I don't, I haven't quite wrapped my mind around the board, is how does, how is Craig obligated to work for a board? He's employed by the city of Hartford.
Right.
He's not employed by a board.
Right.
If you guys establish a board, I think what Tom was giving that is that you're turning some of that control over to them.
Yeah, he has, they have jurisdiction over basically our park and rec, as a department, yeah, department which.
So they would do the hiring, they would do the summer hiring, they would go do the pool hiring, they would do the lifeguard hiring. They would tell Craig when to mow the lawn, and how to mow it, when to fertilize it, when to drag the fields, when to set the soccer step up, when to take it down, right?
That's what I kind of.
Well, they, they could.
They could, yeah, I don't know if they would, but.
They set the schedule for the pool.
Yeah, yeah, he, I think he brought that up that night, saying that if they decide to shut down the pool for a week, then they could do it.
They set the schedule for all ballfields.
Can I ask a question? Shouldn't you set those parameters before you establish the board?
But, but the board by state law has that much authority.
Right.
I, I don't know how a city council directs a board that has that much backing by the state.
So that's where I think Keel requests to find out more what the other communities actually have for authority in their boards, because I'm guessing you can set up stuff differently if you really wanted to.
But that was Tom's point, excuse me.
No, but I, I got to imagine what Tom's saying is, state statute or whatever says, this is what a board can do.
Yes.
Okay. Does that mean we have to follow after the chief, or can it be modified and fit?
Our desires.
You know, in our community, and that's where we get some feedback from the other communities, I think.
Yeah.
Do we need more information?
Alright.
So is there a difference between a park board and a park advisory board?
Well.
You know?
I don't know if the difference in wording is board and committee, I don't think it's advisory.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the word advisory. Board or committee is the change in the.
Saying advisory board or committee, in my opinion.
From what I understood, board was done by an ordinance and committee.
Dumped just by.
By motion.
By motion, right.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright. Enough on that?
Got to say plenty of that.
Okay.
Feel like I'm buying a payloader.
Holy, wow. Wow. Brings up the payloader card.
We need to ride an horn here, break the tie, either way, he's just voting yes.
Oh boy.
I will make a request of some chamber members on the council to get, just feel more connected with the chamber. We see we've got a chamber meeting via Zoom on Monday, the 12th of April. But as I go back into my emails as a city council person, I'm not finding any chamber meeting minutes or anything like that. Is there a way that we can improve those, that communication?
We can put those minutes, I haven't had a chance yet, but put those minutes on the actual website.
The HADF meets every Wednesday.
Yeah, we get them in our.
Those meeting minutes are promptly presented.
Yep.
Just have Teresa and Karen put them on our, our box for us.
Absolutely.
Alright, let's move on to new business, unless we want to talk parks some more? No? Okay, just asking.
We're still in the report, I mean.
Uh, no, we're not, we're doing business. Wait, did you, you want me to jump to something else?
I thought the park was under your doors.
That was, I just read.
Yep.
Uh, review, approve the farm lease, we discussed this last meeting.
Yep, and so last meeting, we passed a resolution to lease the farm that 35 acres we bought out there, because we're not going to utilize it this year. And so Tom drafted the actual farm lease, and we'll advertise now for sealed bids, when the bids come in, when we get the high bidder, this is the lease that we'll sign with them, so basically it's approving this lease to be signed with the high bidder. And bids will be taken until the end of the month, so it'll be at their next meeting, when bids will be presented to you.
So, you know, put a fence in between that field to know who's who, if we have different. Like with the guy that's fronting the rest of that, the makers.
You mean like on the south end, the one who's farming like on the south?
Yeah.
I bet we get an engineer to survey, and also that line is.
Are we going to handle that, like, or should we plan on putting a fence in now anyway for the future? Like, when we build that, we're going to want a fence at end.
I think you could just clearly mark it, I mean, that's typical, I mean, you can, you can, yeah, farmers farm up to imaginary line, but they have two locations across, they have a fence, a post in the middle.
They have GPS then.
I could see they're probably more persistent than we are in their tractor.
It's got to be safe, it's got to be everything.
Yeah, when we pass the, yeah, but.
Yeah, alright.
Does this pair the other farm leases we had?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, I would approve the farm lease.
Hold on a second. Any further discussion? O'Vogue, Branneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Branneman?
Yep.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Alright, last item, discuss pool openings and park rec, did you already kind of touch on this, or?
So, um, I have talked with Amy and Dr. Ruth Dick and, and Laura Johnson, I just want to touch base with the council, make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward this summer and give out information. So, with the pool opening, basically, you know, last year with COVID, really the only thing we did different that we didn't do before, I mean, obviously we put in safety measures like extra cleaning, we put up the plexiglass, we kind of spread out the loungers, um, we put those safety measures in place, but the only other thing we changed was that we were at 50% capacity. Otherwise, we opened it up to everyone, we sold concessions, you know, we let anybody come in. Um, so I talked with Amy, I said, well, how do you feel about this year, what should we do, I mean, do you want to keep that 50% capacity, or are you comfortable with just opening up? Because, um, she's comfortable just opening up, I kind of had that same thought too at this point, I think we're at the point in this pandemic that people are kind of pleasing themselves. If they're comfortable coming to the pool with their kids, they're going to come to the pool with their kids, so if they're not, they're not going to come. If they want to sit in loungers by people, they can, if they don't, they're going to pull them away. So I think we'll still keep, you know, extra cleaning in place and plexiglass up, just to, you know, more or less to kind of help our staff out or protect them, but I think we can open it as normal if the council's agreeable with that, unless anybody feels uncomfortable with that.
There's nothing preventing that right now, is there?
No, not preventing it, it's just, yeah.
Do we need that in motion or just?
No, I, I just wanted to have this discussion so that everybody knew what we're doing, and I just, everybody's in the loop, so.
And wasn't there some comment about doing the rec program in July?
Yeah, so then on the park rec side, I also talked with Laura Johnson, I said, well, how did that go last year, you know, do you want to keep the same, do you want to make any changes? So basically, it went really good last year too, um, we did limit the number of kids per group to 30, I don't think we ever, we never had 30 in every group sign up. So, you know, we definitely stayed under that. Same thing, we'll still, safety measures, you know, have had, had sanitized, so they were sanitized all the equipment when we come in. But she, she says we could probably definitely up that to 50, she still probably thinks we probably won't have that, so, um, you know. She did like though, the two things that we did change that she liked and would like to keep in place is keeping the pre-registration. Previous years, they could pre-register, or most people just came the first day and you didn't know how many kids you had coming or not. She liked the pre-registering. She liked the pre-registering with a cutoff date, that way she knew how many kids were going from each age group and what supplies she needed to buy that. So she'd like that, for us to keep that pre-registration in place. And then, yeah, she, we usually always had it in June, last year we had it in July, because we just pushed it off to see what was happening with COVID. She would like to actually keep it in July, she said it seemed to work out a lot better, the, the weather was better in, in the mornings, you know, because, you know, we start right away, we heat things, little kids, and it's just warmer and better in the mornings. They didn't have to work around jamboree days when they're getting set up in the park for that, so that worked out really good. And there are some school camps, like basketball camps and stuff, going on in June, where they're done in July. And then, but they start up again in August, so July actually worked out really good. So she would like to ask for those three, that, three things, is we have it in July, if that's all good with the council, we have a cutoff of 50 kids per group, and we have pre-registration again. And we have...
You want that in motion?
Yep, you, you can, yeah, you can.
Motion to approve recommendations provided for the park and rec program?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, Brandon?
Yep.
Monahan?
Yep.
Brandon?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, that's not working then.
All right, correspondence, we have anything? Think so? Any reason for executive session?
I don't have anything.
Neither do I. Not, motion to adjourn, if somebody wants to make one?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.